All right, good evening. This July 21st, 2021, meeting of the Oyster River School Board is coming to order. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I do have a couple of adjustments to it. When we get to the district reports, I'd like to bring the communications update up to the top of that section, followed by the architects' report and lead discussion, and then we'll continue with the reach update, test scores, and the other things that are listed here. And then, we will need to have a non-public session at the end of the meeting tonight. So, with those adjustments.
So moved.
Second from Tom, moved by Brian, second by Tom, all in favor? Five in favor. The agenda is approved. So our next order of business is a mask protocol for school board meetings and a potential motion to adopt optional mask usage for school board meetings. So up to this point, we have followed the same procedures that the rest of the high school has been using, and we voted for a framework in, I think, May, that included a change to that framework or the change of that procedure for the fall. So reconsidering where we are in that as we start the new school year. Any discussion?
I mean, the most conservative meetings that I've been in has been the Germ Town Council. So we went remote in March of 2020, and we didn't even have in-person meetings until June of this year. So we were, I mean, I can't think of a more conservative body. And when we came back, since everybody is vaccinated, we're not wearing a mask. So I don't know if that influences decision here, but that's how we're operating on the town government side.
Denise?
And what I would just say is, the recommendation is still, if there is anyone who is not vaccinated, that unvaccinated people should continue to wear masks. So that's just something that I think, not only for us, but members of the public, to be aware of, that that's a recommendation.
Brian?
I'll make a motion to make mask-wearing optional at our school board meetings.
Motion from Brian? I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five in favor. All right. That brings us to public comment. Can I ask how many people are interested in speaking at public comment tonight? Three, four, five?
Probably three.
Do I see six?
Six.
All right. I got you, Jill. All right, so we should be good with three minutes apiece. Yep.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jill Paparo. I live in Lee. I used to live in Durham, so I've been here for a little while. But I'm here tonight to ask for a motion to make masks optional for the kids next year in every school of Oyster River. And I came with just some statistics, because often I listen to the meetings and people say things, but they don't exactly cite where they've heard it or the study where they read it. So I just did a little research. As of today, there are zero cases in Lee, there are zero cases in Madbury, and there is one case in Durham, which is a UNH faculty member. Last year, 16 months ago, I completely understand that we were in a very conservative, scared position. But here we are 16 months later, and we know a lot about this virus, and our community is 60% vaccinated. And I don't think that kids need to be wearing a mask if it's not their parents' choice. I looked on the CDC website today, and there's a study that says that cloth mask materials can also reduce wearer's exposure to infectious droplets through filtration. So if it's a parent's choice for their child to wear a mask at school for their protection, that will protect that child. But not every child should be mandated to wear a mask if it's not necessary. Our neighboring school districts have chosen to ask the parents what they thought. In Dover, there's a parent survey, what they're going to do for next year. Barrington has dropped mask usage for next year. Newmarket has dropped mask usage for next year. Governor Baker in Massachusetts said there will be no masks in school next year. He said that on June 18th. The Diocese of New Hampshire said no masks for Catholic schools next year in New Hampshire. The school district in Plymouth, which actually includes Plymouth State University, is not masking for next year, so they at least have a similar situation to us, because I know that we often talk about UNH. But as we said last year many times, UNH did such a wonderful job of standing up a testing center. I read all of their protocols today for next year, and students are being asked to send in their vaccination card if they want to opt out of the testing program for next year. So we have a very safe bubble around us. And I'm not saying that we stay out of masks for the entire year. If things change, we need to have gates set up. We set up the amazing dashboard on our website, but as of today, with one case, masks are not necessary for my child. If it's necessary for your child, that's a parent choice. And I've thought about this, this whole year, I've tried to come to like, how do I feel differently? Why? Where are you coming from? I really want to come to the middle to understand different perspectives. And Denise, you said something last year that I've thought about every day since you said it. And when we were voting whether kids to go back into the building, Denise, you said that you were worried that if you voted for kids to go back in the building, that you would be responsible for a kid going to the hospital or dying. Something to that effect. That's not a direct quote.
It is true, yes.
And I've thought about that every day, and I appreciate that you care, but I'm the parent, and I have the choice for what my child does. I don't want the government to make that choice for me. So thank you for your time. I'd appreciate more conversation on this tonight, but I understand it's not on the agenda for this evening. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Bruce McKenzie, and I'm a resident of Durham. I've got kids going to school here in the school system. And I had, first off, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak, but three things I wanted to comment on tonight. And the first is masking. And I too believe that that should be a parental choice and not a government choice. But here's a statistic I have. The CDC, this is current today, the risk of kids getting COVID is 500ths of 1%. That's a CDC stat. Kids have a better chance of dying from the common cold than they do of COVID. And it's interesting that it's 500ths of 1%, and kids are 20% of the US population. So the, my thought is, much like what I just heard from Jill, if we had a system set up where we start at school and the kids aren't masked, but we have thresholds where, you know, if a certain percentage of kids started, you know, started to have a problem with COVID, then we would institute masks, given what's going on in the community. I think that's a fair way to start. I also agree that, you know, it should be my choice whether my kid is masked or not, and I have no problem with anybody else's child being masked and being protected. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the school curriculum. And it's interesting. My father grew up on a farm with no electricity or running water. Hitchhiked to New York City when he was 18, put himself through college and law school, and became general counsel of one of the largest companies on earth. And my father said to me repeatedly when I was growing up, that schools should be designed to teach a child to think, to educate a child, to not indoctrinate a child. And I know, the way the curriculum's set up now, my kids have a good chance of reading Stamped and seeing the movie 13 if they go through the educational system here, the junior high and the high school. I don't necessarily have a problem with that. But if my kids are going to read Stamped and view 13, then I think they should also read Dinesh D'Souza's book, The End of Racism, which contends that America isn't a racist country and it's moving away from racism. That both those point of views should be presented to kids in an educational environment, and then they should have the choice to make the decision of what they believe and how they want to model and live their life. I think when you just present one side of the coin, it's indoctrination, it's not education. And finally, I just want to make a case for full disclosure of curriculum being available to every parent in the community in advance of the curriculum being taught, and not in vague generalities, but in specifics. I want to know what my kids are being taught in the coming year in specifics. So if they're going to, if they're going to be presented with the book Stamped, I want to know about it ahead of time. I want to know what my kid's curriculum is ahead of time. I want to be able to easily access it and evaluate it, because it's my responsibility to see to it that my child is educated and not indoctrinated. So those three points, the mask and the parents having the option, the school curriculum being balanced and full disclosure for me to be able to see it. So thank you very much for your time.
So my name is Eric Graham. I'm a native of New Hampshire. I'm a resident of Durham. I have two children that go to the Oyster River School District. They've actually grown up in this school district, and for the most part, really like it, like the teachers, like their friends, and everything else. And, you know, honestly, my wife and I, when we bought in Durham, were really hoping that this would be our long-term home, where we could live, our kids could live free, et cetera. But now we're being forced to look at other school districts. I'm really not happy with how things are being run here. As I actually start to look at other school districts, I learned that, A, a lot of them stayed open. St. Mary's, you know, other school systems, you know, around Interlakes, et cetera, all stayed open without any problems. And also, you know, the biggest issue, or one of the biggest issues that I have, is the mask mandate, similar to, you know, Bruce and Jill that just got up and spoke. There's a great deal of research, statistics, you can research it yourself, that's actually showing that masks are, A, not preventing against a virus. You can sit around and look, each of you, look at the material of the mask that you're wearing, okay? It can be different for each one of you. You could have a single-layer mask, you could be wearing a surgical mask.
Oops, sorry.
All of this just points to masks aren't doing anything. You're just using it to cover the kids' faces. And frankly, the statistics and research show that masks, A, generate more carbon dioxide than is appropriate for children, six times what they should be having. That's a recent German study that came out. Bacteria build up in masks unless you're being very diligent about washing them. Wearing them eight hours a day is causing a lot of buildup and causing things like bacterial pneumonia, which can actually kill children. And the psychological effects around the United States of mask-wearing will be permanent for many children out there. I see a lot of children on the streets today that wear masks just because they feel better with a mask on now. It has nothing to do whether they're scared of a virus, whether their parents are even telling them to wear the mask. They're putting it on because that's how they feel comfortable. We all have to be leaders. We have to think for ourselves. Other school districts, Newmarket, Exeter, you know, Massachusetts just said no masks for the school. This should always be a parental choice. It should not be the superintendent, it should not be the school board. You are not responsible for medical devices for our children. Parents are. We can make the choice for our children, because frankly, masks do nothing.
Mr. Graham, can you come to a conclusion, please?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephanie Graham. I have two daughters in Oyster River School District. And I support the parent choice for masks for Oyster River. And I wanted to also reiterate the fact that, I mentioned several months ago at a school board meeting here, that I think that parent suggestions and input should be considered. There was, to my recollection, only one survey I filled out last year about whether or not I wanted the schools reopened. And there hasn't been any recent surveys of parent opinions related to their comfort level with masks, which I know other school districts have sought those opinions of the families in their district. I think that I want to talk about, in general, to Dr. Morris and the school board, I know that it is all your best intention to protect the children. And the true protection of the children needs to come from parents, and parents know best how to protect their children as the first line of protection. There are risks to masks, and parents should be able to make that choice. There's also a risk to vaccines. Parents should be able to make that choice. Children shouldn't have to have separate rules depending on the choices, the legal choices their parents make. The other question I posed twice at a school board meeting, which I was told I would get an answer to, which I later emailed you all, was the question about what authority does Oyster River Superintendent and School Board have for forcing masks on children when they're not in violation of any local, state, or federal mask mandates? I still am waiting for an answer to that question. Another, another thing I want you all to know is that I know many, I know three families, which for me is many, who have left the district in the last six months because they've been unhappy with the leadership of the school board and the superintendent on COVID policy. And that concerns me. I think that that's because their voices are not being heard, their concerns are not being addressed. And I have found the same thing. The other question that I wanted an answer to was, what about the children who are unable to wear masks? And what path should they go down? The superintendent's answer to that question is, they need to learn remotely, and they need to stay home, and they need to use remote learning, if that's an option, or V-Lax. Unfortunately, that puts that student in a situation where they're very subject to isolation, depression, anxiety, and all the other mental health ailments, which are now plaguing the children in our district and everywhere. This needs to be addressed. The other important point I want to make is about this idea that you're always looking to protect the children at every, at every point. And I also know several children who were 10 years old, who were learning remotely at home with no parent at home.
Ms. Graham, can you come to a conclusion, please?
Yes. I would like the district to start looking into those parents whose children can't go to school, and reach out and find out who's with those children, because some of them don't have anybody to be with them because they have to go to a job.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Hopkins. I live in Madbury. I have four sons, three that are in the district, soon to be sixth, fourth, and second graders. I would like to start by thanking all of you for your time and talents, especially over this excruciating year. There are choices made by this board that I've agreed with and disagreed with, but I thank all of you. As we begin to look forward to the next school year, there are some concerns I have regarding mask requirements and the DEI, the diversity, equity, and inclusion. First, I'm asking that you leave mask usage as a choice for all ages in the hands of the parents. Every day after school, I watched all three of my boys rip off their masks for fresh air, chug their water, and complain about their headaches. Since school has been out and our mask use has been nearly, we haven't been using masks this summer, I haven't heard a single complaint of headaches or dehydration. I can't imagine forcing them to wear masks all school year, every weekday for seven-plus hours a day. Please allow parents to make the best decisions for their families and their health. Choices are freedom we should all unify on. Moving on to the subject of DEI, I would like to begin with an op-ed I read in the mouth of the river by Alden Swyce, Swiss, sorry. I urge everyone on the board to read it if they haven't done so already. And I would argue that the treatment this student received from his peers and teachers throughout his Oyster River school attendance is a testimony to the implementation of DEI ideas and open-ended curriculum. I worry this same treatment will be extended to my boys and many others in this district. My concern began early last school year as I tuned in to my 10-year-old son's fifth-grade topic study lessons, which almost always revolved around race, identities, and intersectionality. His teachers steered conversations towards race and grievances on many occasions, which would then segue into our children's identities. A bit of an overreach, I think. These fifth graders were shown a video on intersectionality three times in a row, the same one, another lesson in race, identity, social status, and outcomes. The same lesson was taught through Don't Touch My Hair, which is a book that's kindergarten about consent. There was a common theme. There were oppressors and the oppressed, always through the lens of race and identity. Same with the book, Indian No More. Even, and at one point, my first grader a couple years ago came home with a dinner conversation of the KKK. I feel like this idea of introducing these, this hatred at such an early age is more harmful than helpful at this stage for our children. Then came the activism. Petitions were made against Columbus Day, and pride parades were organized at school. All this while no science was taught. All year, my son's, and my son's state math test scores dropped significantly. As my husband and I were supplementing my son's math lessons, my son continued to be steeped in political, social justice agendas. Something of note, these teachers were especially trained and equipped to teach these DEI ideas, having spent last summer in special classes they chose to take regarding this form of education through their view of history, the lens of race, identity, and especially politics. Now, I think about it, and are we really surprised at the treatment Alden had received? You might be surprised, but I'm not. I've seen this DEI being implemented, implemented, and seeing the results. I've raised my concern with the teachers and administration throughout this past year. We're talking 10-year-olds being exposed to political agendas, biases, and activism that should not be burdening young, learning, impressionable minds.
Ms. Hopkins, can you come to a conclusion, please?
Yeah. So, oh, I didn't realize it's that long, sorry. So I know we all have the best interest for our children. I don't think this is the right approach, and I think it needs some work. Thank you very much for your guys' time.
My name's Michael Chapman. I have two, two boys in this, one in the middle school, one in the high school, and I had two that graduated since we've been here. One of my biggest concerns, just to echo what Kimberly was talking about, is specifically around the equity part of DEI. I just want to share some of my thoughts about it, and just what I really believe it's rooted in, which is critical race theory. Equity sounds like a nice word, but if you actually look up social equity theory, which they dropped the word "social," so it's not so easy to find, it's not equality, right? Whereas equality means that citizens A and B have equal shares. Equity means adjusting the shares so that citizens A and B are made equal, or made have equal, equal outcomes. Or it's really enforced equality of outcomes. I don't want my sons learning that. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the way it works in the real world. I want to also share what I believe DEI is rooted in, which is critical race theory. Now, I'm not alleging that's being taught, but I want, I'm asking the school board to require or encourage some more disclosure, as Kimberly was talking about, in terms of the curriculum. I've asked both of the principals of these two schools, you know, or any of these concepts, and I haven't gotten any response. So I just want more disclosure, at a minimum, to be able to, as a parent, share, maybe not opposing views, but a different perspective. My thoughts on critical race theory. The entire premise is both anti-white and anti-black. This celebrated yet presumed unfalsifiable theory is based on race, is built on the assumption that blacks or people of color are inferior and whites are superior forever. It is de facto in its approach and says the most important thing about people is their race. If you are white, it works and pushes a narrative that looks like this. If you're a white retail manager at a store and two people walk in at the same time, one white and one black, racism is intrinsic, no matter what. If you help the black person first, critical race theory says, you only did that because you don't trust black people to be left alone in your store. This, of course, is racist. If you help the white person first, critical race theory would say, you only did so because you believe blacks are inferior. That is, of course, racist as well. The whole theory is built on a perpetual and never-ending heads-eye-win-tails-you-lose foundation. Proponents of CRT assume racism is always present. They look for it critically, and they always find it. CRT finds racism in anything, including the ability to critically read our minds. The worst part is the theory removes any and all responsibility for any disparities from people of color. Finally, the irony, if you do the research, and I have, read Derrick Bell, Alan Freeman, Kimberley Crenshaw, Richard Delgado, Cheryl Harris, Charles Lawrence, Matsuda, and Patricia Williams, they're all cited as the original theorists. However, by their own words, they were all influenced by Karl Marx, Horkheimer, Gramsci, Weber, Forkold, who are all, by all accounts, white. Thanks for your time.
My name is Christine Conlin. I'm a resident of Durham. I don't have anything prepared tonight. I just wanted to be clear that I am 100% behind everybody here. I feel very strongly about the optional masks. I've seen my two children come home with migraines. I've seen my daughter with, luckily, not severe mental health issues, but definitely struggling. She's going into high school, and she, you know, it's, it's there. It's really there, and it's really frightening. So although I appreciate, again, you keeping our children safe, it's not your job to the fullest extent. So thank you very much for your time and fully support everyone here.
Others? Moving on to approval of minutes from the June 16th regular meeting.
Motion approved.
Motion from Brian.
I'll second.
Second from Al. Any corrections or discussion?
Nope.
Done? All in favor? And I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here. So four in favor, one abstention. All right. And then announcements, commendations, and comments from the district. And from the board. First of all, I would like to thank Denise for officiating at last month's meeting while I was out of town, but everything went smoothly. And I wanted to address, we've had some questions about how Oyster River will address the inclusion of what's been called, commonly referred to as divisive concepts language in the New Hampshire state budget. As a community, we desire to continue to build a culture where all students, all students are supported and included, especially students who have been excluded or left out, whether intentionally or not. We also value the independence, creativity, and initiative of our teachers, who bring classrooms to life. Additionally, when it comes to policy changes that are driven by state law or regulation, we usually work in concert with guidance developed by experts at the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and that process takes time. So, it'll be sometime before we have that input. Others?
I have one.
Denise?
Just in terms of folks that would prefer their children not to wear masks, then the one thing I have to say is get vaccinated, because that is the only way out of this pandemic. The Delta variant is highly contagious, way more. We're looking at contagion that's way higher than what we had even in the spring, and we're not going to get out of this pandemic unless we get our vaccine rates up. So, that's what I have to say about that.
Others? All right. So, that brings us to district reports, and Dr. Morris, I think we're going to start with a communications update.
Yeah, so the board established a communications committee in the last school year, and we took that work, and I'm going to invite Amy Sterndale, who was on the committee, and Andy Smith, who works for the Research Center at the university, to come to the podium. They have taken the draft work and captured it in what I would call non-survey-esque questions. So, Andy asked us just to generate a stream of consciousness questions around the work of the committee, and Amy was instrumental in doing that, and we forwarded those questions to Andy Smith, and so he's going to do a brief report on where we are at this point.
Well, I feel like you just did my report for me, Dr. Morris. That was kind of what I was going to say. It was a really great process with a communications work group, and we got, I think, very far down the road with identifying what are the likely, what's the work ahead of us. But this is a really important step to get to work with Andy Smith and his team to make sure that all of the work that we could be identifying, whether it's the proverbial low-hanging fruit or a big three-year project, that we really make sure it's what the entire community wants. So, to the point of, you know, people wanting to be heard and wanting to make sure we're asking everybody, we're putting together this survey. So, I think it's going to be very, very useful, and I think well-received, because people will appreciate being asked for their feedback. So, if anyone has questions about what we're working on, Andy or I are certainly happy to answer questions, or you may want to speak more to the survey itself.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. I'm Andy Smith. I'm the director of the UNH Survey Center, and I've worked with you guys on a number of other projects over the years. I was asked to help draft a questionnaire, actually, three separate questionnaires for three different audiences about communications. I think with the overall framework that I look at when I do any kind of survey like this is to make sure that any questions that we ask are actionable, so you can actually do something with the data rather than just ask kind of nice-to-know questions. The three audiences that we identified, first were the parents of students in the district, second being the teachers and employees of the district, and the third being the broader community. All three of those audiences have slightly different ways that we've discussed of being reached, but we've gone through a first draft, and we actually have some priorities. Parents first, probably the community second, and then the staff. Not written in stone, the staff can be done in there as well, but there's different tasks that we need to work on as we go. We've got a, I think, a pretty, I wouldn't say close to final, but relatively close-to-final questionnaire for the parents about communications, and we hope to have that wrapped up pretty soon. My counsel to the committee was that we should probably wait until school has already started, until we do, until we administer the surveys. As you know, summers can get hectic, you're off doing other things, people aren't around, vacations, your mind's just not in school mode, and I think it's very important that we get people thinking about communications with the school when they're in the environment where they're actually needing to or wanting to communicate with the school, have the school communicate with them. So, we have, I think, quite a bit of time in terms of putting this together between now and, say, mid-September for the first one. I would welcome any input. Dr. Morris and Amy have been working with us on this, putting the drafts together. The draft that we have now is by no means the last one. There will be several other iterations, but we're, I think we, the funnel is narrowing pretty quickly, and we hope to be able to get this done in the early fall. Any questions, be happy to answer.
So, interestingly, a survey about communication, I guess one of the questions that I have is how are you going to reach out to these various groups to actually administer the survey?
That is the challenge of modern survey research. I was on the committee that the American Association for Public Opinion Research put together to look at the polling done in the 2020 elections, and that's one of the major things that we focused on, is how the heck are we going to get people to talk with us? The nice thing about at least two of the populations that we're talking about here, parents and staff, we have email addresses for, and we can do web-based surveys for. That's nice in that we can target individual people, but also because it's very inexpensive to do that. There's, you know, the cost of putting a questionnaire together, cost of analysis, but you don't have to pay for postage or pay for people to make phone calls, et cetera. The general public is a different animal. There's no email address list for the residents of Lee Madbury and Durham. Durham has a reasonably good list of email addresses that get town updates put out routinely. It's by no means inclusive of all of the citizens of Durham. Lee has something similar, no means all-inclusive. Madbury doesn't even have a list put together like that, so there are some issues there. We've discussed other alternatives of doing this. One of the things that we've been doing a lot with, and other researchers around the country have been using something called Push to Web, where we can send out letters or postcards or information to people that has a unique identification number and a unique bit.ly address that they can go to and type it in their computer and do that, do the survey that way. The question that we have with all of these is the effectiveness of reaching people as well as the cost involved. And the cost-benefit is the question here that we'll discuss, but there's no perfect way to do research like this. You have to make some compromises in any sort of research program. Even the census, for example, they've spent billions of dollars and they still don't get everybody to complete the census. That's kind of the world we live in. I've seen response rates in telephone surveys go from 80 to 95, 80 to 90% when I first started. Now, we're down around 5% or 6%, meaning the costs have gone up dramatically. Our costs for doing telephone surveys have more than doubled in the last four years for that very reason. So, we're looking at all these things. I will present, when we put our final budgets together, several options to choose from in the delivery and administration of the survey. That's kind of something that's independent of the development of the questionnaire and development of the analysis, but, you know, that is something we're looking at. I wish I could give you an ideal way of doing this, but it all depends on what your budget, timeframe, and everything is. The old joke is there's three ways to do research. You can do it fast, you can do it well, and you can do it cheap. Pick two.
So, which two did we pick?
Up to you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
For the work over the summer. Let's invite the...
So, our next presentation will be from the architects of the middle school, so we'll invite them up to the podium, and they'll give us an update on our sustainability efforts. We've had a number of updates in terms of progress on construction. Andre will give us a quick update on the construction process, but the real focus of tonight will be where we stand in relation to our sustainability efforts.
Good evening. So, I'm just going to talk quickly about construction progress. As of our June billing, we were at 64% complete, and at this point, the project is now kind of working from the top down in the inside of the school. On the fourth floor, paint and ceiling grid are pretty much complete, and many of the ceilings are starting to be flooded, meaning the tile itself is going in. Casework installation has started in the science labs, and we anticipate they'll be complete on the fourth floor at the end of next week. Bathrooms have all been tiled, both on the walls and the floors, and those should be completed by the end of the week, and they'll be moving down to the third floor. The third floor itself is a mirror image of the fourth and is about two to two and a half weeks behind, and so in another, say, three weeks, it should be at the same state of completion as the fourth floor. In the second floor, they're busy painting. On the first and second, I'm sorry, in the first and stairwells, they're hanging sheet rock. On the outside, the roof has received solar panels on the fourth, on top of the fourth floor, and those are just now being wired. Then they'll move down to the lower roofs, and all that work should be complete in about three weeks. The solar bus canopy is due to start being erected the first week of August, and then the solar panels will follow right after that. Site work is ongoing around Code Drive, Dennison Road, and Garrison Avenue in preparation for the change in directions. That was approved by the Durham Town Council last Monday, and somewhere around the second week of August, signs will go up, and we'll work with Durham PD to get some flashing informational signs in place so that people start getting used to the new flow of traffic. For all of you that don't know, Garrison will change its direction from going from Madbury up to Dennison, or, sorry, from Dennison to Madbury. Now, it'll be going from Madbury up to Dennison. And Dennison will reverse direction as well, so it will go from Code Drive over to Baghdad. The recent rain has been a challenge for the siding, but they're doing very well with the exterior block. This is a, oh. What kind of block are we using? Thank you. I'm having a block. So, we're using a ground face CMU on the lower parts of this school, and then in about two weeks, we'll start laying brick in some of the areas as well. I don't know how many of you noticed, but yesterday, for the first time, we started to see some of the blue metal accent tile, which is a very interesting product. I think it'll look spectacular, and it's designed as an accent along with a silver component as well. So, things will get really exciting on the outside in the upcoming weeks. We're still on schedule to turn over this school at the end of February, with the upper floors being available, you know, maybe a month or so earlier. Budget-wise, we're looking good, and we're still watching the potential of three hits to the contingency. One of those is a potential need for a radio booster system, for portable radios for public safety. As soon as we have a little bit more of the siding on the school, we will be conducting a test with Durham PD and FIRE to see whether we need that system or not. It's a fairly expensive system, not something that's in the budget currently, so we've left some contingency for that. Second item is how much ledge we're going to encounter as we start to cut down the front face of the school. We know that there's some there, and we also know there's some underneath where the field will be going. So, we have a considerable amount of contingency slotted for that. And then the last item that we don't know whether we'll encounter any hidden hazardous materials when we demo the school. There's been a thorough survey done, but there are some areas that you just can't see or test until you start to tear apart the building. So, we won't know that until March and April of next year. But in general, the project budget is doing very well, and we feel very good about being able to come in at or below the GMP. Any questions?
What percentage is done now?
We should be close to 70% this month.
That's great news. Thanks, Andre.
Thank you, Andre.
All right.
So, I'd introduce Ann and Steve, who are the architects of record for the project, and Doug, who is responsible for maintaining the record toward LEED certification. So, as we move forward on this project, just to remind everyone, there were three major pillars related to this project. Obviously, meeting the academic needs of the students was the first pillar, and safety and wellness was the second, and the third was sustainability. And we've not spent a lot of time reporting on it, and so we wanted to make sure the board had a progress report on how well we're going, our efforts are towards sustainability. Our goal was to have a net-zero building. I think we're well on track to have that goal met, and I also would say that this will be the first building of this size, schoolhouse of this size in New England that will reach that goal. EverSource reached out a couple of weeks ago, and they've been working with us, and they want to use the new middle school as a model for other public construction in the state, so we'll be starting to see some of their materials starting to promote the school and the efforts that we've made to date. So, I'll turn it over to you, Ann, and Steve, and Doug, and bring us up to speed.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Morris. Just quickly, I want to note that a project of this nature really requires a lot of professionals with varying expertise to come to the table to get this kind of project off the ground. I want to note that Andre has done, and his whole team has done, an incredible job. We love working with them. It's been easy. It's been cooperative, and it's been a great experience. So, tonight, we have Steve Laput, who, as our project architect, is on the job site at least once a week. He's in charge of making sure this building goes smoothly and it is built as designed. This is his day-to-day, and so he's going to give you a construction update. And then we have Doug Shiloh, who is your LEED certification expert. So, it's his job to make sure that we get certification, and for the first time, I think, in a while, he's ready to give a pretty profound update to you all as to where we are in that process. So, I'm going to hand it over to Steve first.
My apologies, Dr. Morris, for interrupting your flow. I just wanted to tag on briefly to Andre's presentation with some photographs to demonstrate the progress that he's just described. Very quickly, I've got a handful of slides here. These are taken yesterday. This is the main entrance of the building, the west elevation. I don't know how many of you were able to get up close like this, but you can see on the lower part, the ground-faced concrete masonry units we call CMU is going up very well. Windows are all installed, and you can see a little bit of the site work in front of the building where the grade is being lowered to its final grade level. This is another corner of the building, so on the left-hand side, you can see the corner of the gymnasium with an adaptive PE classroom underneath that bank of louvers right there, glasses going in, and again, you can see little bits of the masonry starting to rise up on the sides of the building. This is a close-up, again, showing, again, the masonry in the bottom, and then, as Andre described, those blue squares up there between the windows, that is the metal wall tile. It's basically a shingle product made out of stainless steel that's been chemically and electrically treated to give it that blue tint. It's a very nice product, and you'll be seeing more of that going up on the building. And as Andre said, we have the same product in a silver color that will be going along with that as well. Again, some of the site work that's taking place on the left-hand side is the grading at the front entrance of the building, and then on the right hand... up on the sides of the building. This is a close-up again, showing again the masonry in the bottom, and then, as Andre described, those blue squares up there between the windows, that is the metal wall tile. It's basically a shingle product made out of stainless steel that's been chemically and electrically treated to give it that blue tint. It's a very nice product, and you'll be seeing more of that going up on the building. And as Andre said, we have the same product in a silver color that will be going along with that as well. Again, some of the site work that's taking place on the left-hand side is the grading at the front entrance of the building, and then on the right hand, some of the work that is more easily seen along Code Drive, creating the beginnings of the bus loop along there. This is an image inside the gym. The ceiling has been painted along with all the duct work. And then along the sides of the gym, we again have masonry that goes up to a height of 12 feet as a protective measure with balls bouncing against the sides. Plus, the upper portion of that masonry is an acoustic type of masonry. When you get the chance to go in there, you'll see little slots and holes in the concrete block. That's for absorbing sound and helping with acoustic treatments in what is a fairly large space in the building. One of the really exciting spaces in the building is the concert hall. All the drywall has been hung in the space, and the crews have been in there. Unfortunately, I didn't take this picture earlier in the day yesterday. There were, I counted, seven lifts in that space, all moving around with people up at the ceiling, taping and sanding. It was quite a sight to see. This is a view of the Learning Commons, the central space running down the building. On the left-hand side, a view taken from the first floor looking up, and then on the right-hand side, a view at the, I think it was on the third floor, looking across a light well that then bleeds down into the Learning Commons. On that right-hand side, you can also see one of the large skylights at the very top of that light well, and the extraordinary amount of light, that natural light that's bringing down deep into the building. This is taken on the fourth floor. This is one of the, what we call the team foyer areas. It's a common space outside of one of the teams. Painting is going on, so this is the, I'm going to forget my theme names. I believe this is the forest-themed foyer with the green paint. You can see ceiling tile going in, light fixtures are going in, and I believe lockers that will be going on sort of this L-shaped platform that's in the central part of that area. Those are due to arrive, I think, within the next couple of weeks. So that will add yet another layer and splash of color to that space. As Andre described, casework or the cabinetry is being installed in the science classrooms right now, and seems to be going really well. And again, finishes, including tile, ceramic, and porcelain wall tile and floor tile is being installed. On the left-hand image is one of the toilet rooms on the fourth floor with a set of green colors, again, with the forest theme that we have in the building. And then the right-hand picture is one of the corridor public spaces. This is a mock-up of the tile wainscote that will be going in as a protective measure. If you think of kids of middle school height with their backpacks scraping against the walls, this will protect the walls. And solar panels on the roof, this was a very exciting thing to see. There's a whole sea of solar panels up on the roof, on the high roof, and as Andre said, they've all been placed up there, and as of yesterday, a crew was interconnecting them with all the wiring. And that's for the construction tonight. And I'd like to introduce, once again, Doug Shiloh from our office, who's leading our LEED certification effort.
Thanks, Steve. So I'm here to talk about LEED a little bit. First, I'll give you an overview of what LEED is, in case, for those of you who might not be as familiar with the ins and outs here. So just to start, LEED is a combination of many things. Dr. Morse mentioned the energy efficiency of this building, but that's the energy and atmosphere, one credit in that category of LEED. There are seven different categories in the LEED certification system, and 110 possible points within all those categories. If you get 40, then that's a LEED-certified building. 50, LEED Silver. 60 is LEED Gold, and if you get up to 80, then that's LEED Platinum. There are a few of those buildings in the world. So in our project, what we've been able to take advantage of, given our site and our project type and our program, is right now, we're tracking at 65 points, which is tracking LEED Gold. And I'll talk a little bit more about these separate categories and give an example, a highlight, so you can see what goes into these. So the first one that we want to talk about, if we start at a bird's-eye level, is location and transportation. So here, we're looking at Durham, as I'm sure you guys can all see and are familiar with. So in this category, we're taking advantage of surrounding density and diverse uses. So that's promoting dense buildings and efficient urban layouts through promoting bus, public transportation, biking, pedestrian use, things other than cars. And reduced parking footprint is another one that we take advantage of onsite, and we do that in a way that will not contribute adversely to street parking, of course. And we take advantage of the green vehicles, which are becoming ever more popular by accommodating them with charging stations. Let's zoom in on the surrounding density and diverse uses a little bit. So we took a look at the density. Right in the middle there, that dark spot, is the Oyster River Middle School site, and surrounding that for about a half-mile radius, that's the boundary in which we're seeking to be dense enough to get this credit. Now, this is a credit that, this is a portion of the credit that we were not able to achieve just because of the amount of residential area that surrounds the site. We're close to Durham, which you can see on the lower left there. The more dense is the lighter color. But just the way that the site lays out, we didn't quite get there, very close. But we did get diverse uses. As you can see here, we're within walking distance to Bami and Breaking New Grounds and Durham Health Center and all of these, Durham House of Pizza, all these different basic uses, which combined equal enough to get the diverse uses credit. So this shows what's involved in just one of the points in the LEED rating system and how we go about achieving these seemingly soft goals in a rigorous way. And so this is the successful diverse use credit here. To look at the next category is, once we get onto the site, how do we take advantage of the site that we have? And so zooming in, we have construction activity pollution prevention, and that's developed with our civil engineer. We make sure that the, we don't have non-point source pollution running off from the site during construction or after construction. The cisterns are protected, the site boundaries are protected with silt fences or berms or all these various things that you see during construction, the orange fences. I'm sure you've seen them. Environmental site assessment, we make sure that this site is not going to contain any hazardous materials, or if we do, we know it. And so that environmental site assessment is another prerequisite, along with preventing construction activity pollution. A more thorough site assessment gets us a point, which is examining the hydrology, the topography, the human factors of the site for the surrounding area. So we have a point there. And open space is regional priority in this area, and we achieve that credit as well by preserving enough of the kind of open space that you see in this background image here. Not only open space that's accessible to the public or to users, but also a certain percentage of it has to be vegetated, not turf grass, as in. So then we also achieve the light pollution reduction credit, where we don't have spillover of the parking lot lights to adjacent properties, right? We're good neighbors. And not only to the residential areas, but also to the natural wildlife in the area, the native habitat. And finally, the joint use of facilities. We're contributing to an efficient use of these buildings, once they're built, by sharing them, by sharing the functions. Whether it's the new reception auditorium or the gymnasium, these will, there will be sign-ups for public use. And so this is a little bit more into the open space credit. And here, we show, highlighted in green within the red property line, the amount of space that's accessible, that you could walk and enjoy as open space. Now, 37% of that, 37% of the site is open space, so that gets the credit, and also 26% is vegetated, and you can see that in our landscape plan here. So that's how we document that credit. Moving into the water efficiency category here, this is Oyster River. I'm sure you recognize it. And it's important to protect these natural resources, ever more so. And we do that in this project by reducing our outdoor water use through zero escaping. We don't have outdoor irrigation or a need for it because we use native plants, which are hardy for this zone, and that will also cut down on maintenance costs. Indoor, we reduce the plumbing use through efficient fixtures and efficient planning, laying out things in a way to reduce water use. Long lines equal turning on the tap for a longer time to get that hot water, right? So we stack our bathrooms and are efficient with the layout. And finally, we take a look at water metering to verify what it is that we do is working out the way it's supposed to in the future. So you'll be able to see this working after the building's done. Here's an example of the indoor water savings that we gain and what it is that we're taking a look at when we hope to gain those efficiencies. Overall, we have a 32% savings over baseline, and that's just in efficiency. So let's take a look at the energy and atmosphere category here. This is the biggest category, makes the biggest impact, and so it has the most points. The first thing that we have to do is commission this building. This is a requirement of LEED. A third-party commissioning agent comes, and after Andre does all his work, the commissioning agent comes in and makes sure it's all working like it's supposed to. No fans are backwards, or valves are going the wrong way, or anything like that. There's always a little, a thing or two that needs to be fixed, and they're going to catch it. Optimizing energy performance, that comes in in the design. We have a very thorough energy model there. Our mechanical consultants rigorously came up with and documented through the LEED process. It's a very special energy model that they have to do, and we gained 17 points out of 17 points for that. Zero net energy building gets all the points, and the solar panels help as well. But actually, that is without even considering the solar panels yet. So advanced energy metering, like the water meters, this is going to help us determine that it's actually working, once you get in that building, the way it's supposed to. We're going to also pursue demand response, which is when this, when a utility faces the prospect of a brownout, they ask big users of energy to cut back on their energy. And in the event that that happens, the school will be ready with a plan on how to cut it without sacrificing safety or sacrificing the learning that happens there. And enhanced refrigeration management is the last one here, and that's another requirement of LEED. We can't use HCFCs or other ozone-depleting materials in our refrigeration loops. So diving in a little bit more to the optimized energy performance credit, the biggest one on this, on the certification, we have 49% savings over the baseline, and that's without the solar array, again. With the solar array, we're producing 120% more than we use. So this is a net positive building. And this, in addition to meeting exemplary performance with LEED, this is also an, meeting the AIA 2030 challenge of carbon neutrality eight years early. So just as Dr. Morse said, this is really setting the standard for decades to come. This is the new type of school.
Does the 120% factor in natural gas use as well, or is that just electricity?
Yes. Yes, it does. Yep. Not just electricity. Great question. So move into the materials and resources category. I promise I only have two left. Lots of categories. But this is more about the materials that we use in this building, where they come from, how we dispose of them, how they go up, and how they perform. So we're going to have recycling centers in the building, and there's composting in the building for the users, once the building is built, and that's a prerequisite of LEED. Construction and demolition waste management is a big factor in this, too, and this goes to the embodied materials that go in the construction process here. And so we have five different dumpsters, I believe, five different dumpsters, so we sort onsite and divert those materials from the landfill, which makes a huge difference, especially now when recycling is tough. Building lifecycle impact reduction is a new credit with this new version of LEED, and I'll talk a little bit more about that one. But that's basically using materials, the right materials for the building to reduce our carbon footprint, but also eutrophication, acid rain, all these different aspects. Environmental product declarations are something that we take a look at specifications, and we specify products that have documentation about their lifecycle so that we can do that building lifecycle impact reduction study. And material ingredients is another form of documentation that talks about the health of the products. Is this product safe to be using in a school with young students? So diving in a little bit to the building impact study that we did, just like the energy model and the renderings that you've seen previously, our three-dimensional model has embedded in it information about volume of every material that we use. And so when you see here in yellow, the concrete that we use, we can model 71% of the mass is the concrete, and that 27% of the global warming potential in turn is due to the concrete that we use. Metals in green are a big portion of this as well, and that makes up the superstructure. And a lot of this is unavoidable, but we balance it in such a way that is below the baseline use for a building of this type. So we've made a baseline model, and our model is shown in green, how much we reduce the impact of our model. And I'd like to highlight here, global warming potential is the carbon footprint of the building. That's the CO2, tons of CO2 that we release here. And when you compare that to the net positive energy use, you can project into the future when you actually get carbon zero, not just that net zero energy, but carbon zero. Final category, I promise. Indoor environmental quality is the, is one of these things where people think, they know it when they see it. It's a little bit tough to define, but there are rigorous standards, and we're able to follow them to provide you with a space that is great on the interior of the building. So the first and foremost with a building this tight, we need to have great indoor air quality performance. We need to get that ventilation right. We have energy recovery, ventilation, and the air is going to be great. Environmental tobacco smoke control, that's another requirement for LEED. There's no smoking in this building. And that's not a problem due to the policies already in place. Minimum acoustic performance, Steve talked a bit about that with the recital hall. That's actually a requirement for LEED for schools, where we have double-wall construction, for example, around the auditorium and the concert practice halls, and we control isolation between the rooms, also noise from outside, and also noise within the rooms, the reverberation time. And we have enough absorbent materials to reduce that to an acceptable level, given assemblies that have been tested and proven. Enhanced indoor air quality strategies. We went above and beyond the requirements of LEED in this project and provided walk-off mats to reduce pollution coming into the building, and increased ventilation rates, certain filtration media to achieve even better air quality. And in addition to that, construction indoor air quality management plan, that's, again, the great work of Andre and Bowen Corporation. They have a checklist that they run through and make sure, and it's actually shown in the background there, their checklist, and they walk through at milestones in construction and make sure that materials that could be damaged by water and get moldy are discarded, or make sure that they're elevated above the floor. They make sure that the ducts are covered in plastic until they're used, so they don't get dust in them. The checklist is pretty extensive. I won't go through it all. But... But at the end of the project, we're going to make sure and verify that this has all been done right with an air quality test with an industrial hygienist. Interior lighting is one of those qualities of a space that's difficult to define, but we're going to do it through the LEED rating system by providing lighting, LED lighting throughout that's a color temperature and amount that is conducive to learning. But also, we're going to look at the materials reflectance values. That's walls, ceilings, floors, work surfaces. And we're going to look at those to make sure that we're reducing glare and reducing those, those headaches that I heard something about. Quality views is one I'd like to talk a little bit more about now. So quality views is one of these really soft-sounding qualities, but here's how we studied it. We first made diagrams of each and every regularly occupied space to see what spaces, what percentage of those spaces had a view to outside. So that's this diagram here and in yellow, you see the spaces that have a direct view to the outdoors. And the regularly occupied spaces is the key word here, spaces where you're going to be for an hour doing a task that requires that great view. And the light wells in the middle contribute to that as well. So you can see that in the middle here, those rooms in the center where people are going to be for more than an hour, those resources centers, they're going to have great views as well, just even with this deep footprint. And so after we do these plans and make sure that they have views, we make sure that their quality by rendering every view. And so here, we took every view, here's every room here, here's my matrix and here's a zoom in of one such view, the band practice room where we're showing the qualities that make this view a quality view. And so here, we can see sky and flora, so that counts as one quality and objects that you can focus on there 25 feet away at least, that's another quality. And being a certain distance away from the window that was shown in the plan, that's another quality as well. Overall, this building achieves 81% quality views for regularly occupied spaces, which is excellent. And then finally, we have our innovation points, which is points that don't fit into those other categories, but are no less important. We started this project with an integrative process. One was how, how Oyster River School district was going to hold us accountable. Were you going to do passive house rating system or a LEED system? And we had an early meeting to hash that out and tell you about the differences and make sure that we were going about it in the right way. And so we, we get a point for that because that's important to discuss these things early on. We wouldn't have been able to do this without discussing it from day one. Me being a LEED accredited professional, get a point for that. Yay me. Pilot credits, credits that are experimental, just coming out within the last year. Passive survivability, you have a great generator, a gigantic generator that will take care of, take care of your needs in the case of, that you need backup power. And you're inclusive. Social equity is a, is a part of maintaining building relevance going into the future and the all-gender bathrooms that you have here, Single Occupant, is going to take this unnecessary argument out of the equation and maintain the relevance of this building for hundreds of years to come. That's what we're hoping. Innovation credits are ones that have been tried and true, but don't fit into the categories. Purchasing of the lamps, all being LED, therefore they don't include things like mercury. You get a point for that. We're going to also talk about operations and maintenance ongoing for the building and how to maintain this building in a sustainable way with the facilities manager and we get a point for that. And talking about this building with the public and having some signage around, talking about the sustainable aspects of the building, making this a part of what you learn when you go in the school, that's, you get a point for that as well. So all in all, 65 points and right now, we're at a point where we're about to start the review process where we submit the design credits and we'll have some review comments back. We always have some review comments from the third-party verifier and we'll be able to just start documenting and getting credit for all the wonderful things that you're doing. So with that, I want to check if there are any questions.
Just thank you so much. It's very interesting because you hear LEED certification, but it's like, well, what does that really mean? So I really appreciate the presentation and breaking it down.
You're very welcome. Anytime.
Just in looking at this, it seems like the school is going to be this great instructional space on sustainability. You know, I mean, to learn what sustainability is, to learn what solar power is, learn what, you know, thermal energy that you're using. I mean, it just, it just seems like there's so much that can be learned by learning how that school works.
It would be a shame if these lessons didn't continue, is our position. So, and we also like to show off a little bit, you know?
Sure, sure.
When we first went into this, we're first, I think Tom, you were at the meetings where we're debating LEED and the other one, I forget what it is. But no, we really would be happy if we just reached the basic LEED and that was kind of our goal, just to, to do the minimum and just as this was built and as the architects and everything came in and did everything they needed to do, all of a sudden, without doing anything extra, we just worked our way up to gold. And it was kind of, it was really interesting just to see how certain things we already had planned, that were already in the plans, got us to the, up two levels, which is, as I've said before, and this is definitely when this school opens, I think you're going to see people writing about it and coming to visit it from very far away to see what, how we did it and why we did it. And how, I don't want to say it was simple, but with the support of the taxpayers and everything, this all kind of came together and it worked out really well. And it's really, it's really cool to see how far we've gotten since those days of us scribbling something out on a piece of paper on how this is going to happen.
And it's a long-term investment, right? There's a, a long-term benefit in terms of being able to control the, the temperature, the humidity, the lighting quality, as well as energy savings for the long run.
Yeah. Now, the one question I did have is, previously, we said our fossil fuel usage was dropping by about 85%. Is that because we're a net positive building? Does that go down even more? Because I know our gas was our backup and supplemental on cold days and things like that. So I don't know if that.
Yeah. These percentages really depend on what you're comparing against. So I can get back to you on what that, where exactly that 85% number came from. I'll have to look back and see. But certainly, there's the efficiency and then, and all this, all the, all the LEED items that I was talking about, actually, don't take into account the solar panels because, because you guys are selling the REC's to keep, to keep fiscally responsible here. You want to, you know, keep, keep it as inexpensive as possible, but as a result of that, you're doing this well without the solar panels, according to LEED.
So Doug, along those lines, so in seven years, the board has the option of purchasing the solar panels, so that would then count an increase of the 120%?
That, that's right. That's right. We're counting it for things like the AIA 2030 challenge. So that number of 120% is based on those calculations. And, and of course, to make things complicated, the AIA has different baselines than LEED and I won't get too much into that, but, but 120% is the amount of energy compared to the energy that you use, not the baseline. So that's a.
That was my next question. You know, when we started this process, we talked about what net zero meant. And so just to emphasize what you just said, it means that we're producing the amount of energy that we're using.
Net zero energy, yes. That's what that means.
And net positive means we're producing more.
That's correct. Yep. It's confusing because it's in the negative, but we say positive, but that is, that is the parlance.
Doug, thank you very much. It was very detailed, but it's really the first time we've visited it as a whole board. So even though it was detailed and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Philippone.
So I'd like to begin, I know it says I'm going to speak about REACH first, but I'd like to begin by talking about the standardized assessments and there's a memo in the backup for you and I'll be referring to that. The data that I pulled and looked at were the SAT, was the SAT data and the STAR data, the New Hampshire State Assessment Data. We've received specific student information, but it's, the state has not analyzed it to determine cut scores and to look at it in comparison to the state itself, all the students within the state. So we're waiting for that and once we have that, I can report that information back to you. The SAT, as you know, we weren't in session in the spring of 2020. So they did have us administer the SATs to that class, would have been the juniors, but it ended up being the seniors this year in the fall. So I took those scores and added them into what you're seeing in the memo. So you can see overall, the scores have, that stayed pretty consistent. So the mean score in the spring of 2019 for the SATs was 1144, in the fall of 2020 was 1144 and this year was 1133. So there was a small decrease and if you look at it, if you pull it apart a little bit more, you can see that the decrease was probably in some of the math area. And so what we will do is the, the math department, who loves data, I'm sure, will be pulling that apart to figure out where, where that decrease, to identify where that came from. Does anyone have any questions about the SAT data specifically? Okay. And then the STAR data is also on, it's on the second page. This STAR data, what I did was I looked at some of the information that was presented to, that Todd had presented and that was the fall, the reading fall and reading and fall of 2019 and 2020. As you know, we didn't have the spring for the high school, I'm sorry, the fall for the high school. We didn't have that information. So this is showing you proficiency and how students are growing. It's showing the growth over time for, for those kids at Mas, at Mastway, Moheramet, Middle School and High School. And so what I wanted to do is to be able to determine, you know, have students, since, since we've been out because of the pandemic and in a lot of remote instruction, have, have students been growing over that time period with proficiencies in these areas? And so we are seeing growth for our students within the reading as well as the math. What we need to do and what we will be doing is sort of dialing down a little bit more clearly into this information because what we want to do is look at it, look at individual students, because there are students that, that have struggled and we need to make sure that we continue to utilize our MTSS system that we have and process that we have to be able to identify those students and ensure that they get the supports that they need so that they can continue to grow. One of the things that I find really fascinating when I was pulling this data apart was that we actually had an increased number of students participate this year in the STAR assessments. So there's more students, it may be by five students or 10 students, but there are more students that are participating in, in the STAR assessment. And so the hope that I have is that we will have those numbers again in the fall and then in the spring of next year and we can look at specific students and we can also look at the students as a whole to continue to see growth. Does anybody have any questions about the STAR data? The, I'd like to talk a little bit about REACH. REACH has been a wonderful opportunity to keep kids active and engaged over the summer months. We are so fortunate that we have faculty and staff that have continued to work this summer. It's been a very challenging school year and so there was some concern about having programs for students over the summer. However, our faculty and our staff stepped up and we have had a wonderful experience. We've had about 340 campers over the past three weeks and around 177 of those students have stayed for the Friday program through the Durham Parks and Rec and the after REACH program through Durham Parks and Rec. I really would like to thank Regan Spinney, Dan Hammond and Rachel Gazowski from Durham Parks and Rec. Rachel's been very helpful to us and the three of them have worked very hard to make the summer program possible in a new space. Outside during rainy weather sometimes has been also a challenge. So we've worked very closely with Misty Lowe and Brian Ryan at Mastway to ensure that we can shift over to the inside and have classroom, classroom space and be able to have lunch and everything that we need with the ESY program also occurring at the same time. So it's been definitely a team effort, which we appreciate. The high school and the middle school have been actively engaged in summer program here at the high school. So the high school's been a very busy place as well with ESY, SEL program and summer recovery. And I just want to put a, a quick word in for the high school faculty and staff and the summer program. There's been a big change this year in the summer program in the high school. Traditionally, recovery for students at the high school level has been through V-Lax. However, this year, the faculty and the staff have designed personalized programs for individual students for recovery. So the individual students that are involved with recovery are doing recovery that is course-specific, student-specific. We have kids in labs, doing labs with Michael Bluen and we have kids working in the library with Jen Weeks and Alex Eustace. And so this work has been, was done prior to the faculty leaving and I really think that it speaks to the dedication that the faculty have to ensure that the education that the students are receiving is personalized, individualized and appropriate for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Dr. Moore.
Thank you. So to continue the superintendent's report, the, I wanted to give you an update on the Chinese program. So we have hired a high school Chinese language teacher and we have hired a middle school Chinese language teacher. Both of them have, are naturalized citizens, so it's one of those issues where we don't have to chase after visa material as we have when we were using the Confucius Institute. So what that, what that results in is that we've solved two-thirds of our problem and then the last issue that I see as superintendent that we need to have a meaningful discussion over is the after-school program at the elementary level. So I just want to give you a sense of where we are on money. Hiring those two teachers was about $124,000 and the board had authorized $178,000 for this effort. You know, if we estimate, you know, $40,000 for insurance, that brings us up to $164,000. And I'm, I'm not asking the board to make a decision tonight. I will ask the board to make a decision on August 4th, but what I really want to plant the seed in tonight is our, our K through four program has been an after-school program. And I've reached out to One World Language to see whether they would be willing to provide a similar effort of an after-school program. They are and that cost would be about $20,000 for the year and they would offer programming specifically at Mastway and specifically at Moheramet. And so I, I think it's worth the board's consideration. It would bring the total cost of completing the whole effort to about $183,000, give or take. The reason I'm putting the after-school program out there is that we have made a commitment to parents in the past and granted, all of this was done through grants from the Confucius Institute. But I just feel like we need to really consider the after- But I just feel like we need to really consider the after-school program, given that we had made that commitment, just as we had made the commitment to the middle school and the high school. And the cost is relatively nominal compared to hiring our own staff, so it's incredibly cost-efficient. So I'm really not trying to ask the board to make a decision tonight. I'll put a package together in relation to the August 4th meeting and hoping that you'll consider allowing me to enter into a contracted service with One World Language so we can continue the program that we've had right along with them.
So if parents chose to pay, you know, it was pay-as-you-go, whatever, like they paid themselves to be able to do a program, do you have a sense of what the cost? Is that $20,000 regardless of how many kids are enrolled? Like, I'm trying to get a sense of...
No, it's based on, so I reached out to Anita Mather, who has been coordinating the after-school program for the district for a couple of years. She gave me a spreadsheet of the number of children who participated this year and the number of children who participated prior to the pandemic. And so we based it on a best guess of those two numbers, and that's the number that I gave One World Language to build an estimate on.
Okay. So I guess I'm just trying to understand if we don't fund it. And honestly, my only concern with us funding it is that how can we justify that and not offer other languages? That's what I've said all along. So I guess I'm trying to understand that if we offered it, you know, for parents having to pay themselves, do we have a sense of what that cost would be?
I can have that information at the next meeting for you, Denise. I guess, you know, just where my head is coming at is we spend, you know, a pretty significant amount of money at the high school and middle school for various after-school programs. And we don't spend much at the elementary. And just in terms of context, I think that, you know, this is an investment that will also feed into the growth of our world language program, because one of our goals in the world language program is to consider a comprehensive, you know, K-12 program that we'll talk about when we're talking about the strategic plan. But mostly, I'm concerned about the immediacy of, you know, the issue, which is really what the board addressed in relation to Confucius Institute shutting down at the university and making sure that, you know, we've made, continue to make the commitment we have made. And we certainly have done that at the middle school and high school. And I would just hope that the board would be open to maintaining that commitment at the elementary as well.
So I guess my question would be if we also offered at least one other language, because I just hear it. If parents are going to...
I looked into that, Denise. And so we're a year away from being able to afford to offer. And that's a big conversation during budget season with the board. So my intent, as we look at the next budget, is to look at the cost associated with offering Spanish K-4 in the school day. And if we do that, then I would want to continue the effort in Chinese in the school day. But right now, we're not in a position to have an "in the school day" conversation because we haven't had it in relation to the budget, and we need to have it in relation to the budget. This is really just a Band-Aid to hold the fort for the kids who've already been engaged until we can have a more meaningful discussion on a comprehensive K-4 program.
And if we don't do something like this, we're taking a step backward, right? Because we had, you know, an after-school program and then...
We've had an after-school program now for, well, the better part of seven years, if not longer. If Yousi was here, she'd be able to, you know, give us the timeline, because she was the first parent that helped organize the after-school program. But it's at least seven years, Tom. And really, all we just need to do is get through this one school year so we can have the conversation, the richer conversation around world language for the elementary.
Have we had parents or teachers look at the One World proposal and look at how different, it's going to be a little bit different at least than what the Confucius Institute program was after-school?
We have, we've been partnering with One World Language over the years. You know, I've had brief conversations with Bridget. She happened to be, who's now the Director of One World Language. She's away, like away out of the country. So some of the questions that I would ask her in a meeting, I can't ask her, whether the program, for example, Anita raised the issue of whether they have the staffing to have a live person do it or whether it would be a remote person doing it. I don't have the answer to that at this point. But Well, One World Language has been a partner with the district at various times over the nine years I've been here, and they are an amazing quality program. So I've no doubt that what they would put together for us would be top-notch.
I think when we pick this up again next time, it would be helpful to have somebody who had familiarity with the previous program have looked at it.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that.
If it's in place.
So that, you know, that's where we're almost at the place where we were when Confucius Institute was supporting teachers in the district, and that's the one place that we're not quite there yet. So then I just need a motion from the board in relation for Michael and I to be able to sign the general assurances from the state. And so that's an annual motion of the board. It used to be that, three years ago and further back, the superintendent signed them without any board action. This is a change in procedure that the current commissioner put in place. And so we just need authorization from the board so that Michael and I can sign these.
Brian?
A motion to authorize superintendent and board chair to sign the general assurances.
I'll second.
Second from Denise. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Five in favor?
Thank you. And the last thing I just want to address briefly is the language in the state budget that addresses the divisive concepts piece. You know, one of the people who spoke very clearly said that, you know, he was not connecting our DEI efforts with critical race theory. And I appreciate that, because we have not been using critical race theory to guide our work. And I just want to piggyback Michael's comment. We're waiting for guidance from New Hampshire School Boards Association. In fact, the department just put out its internal guidance to school systems late this afternoon, and I haven't seen it. So our job right now is to educate ourselves and make sure that the work that we're doing in the district promotes all of the issues that Michael alluded to in his opening. It's really not about treating one race poorer than another race. It's really about creating an atmosphere of acceptance for everyone. And so I think at this point, we'll be dissecting the state's guidance, and we'll be working on this foreseeable future, because the bill is pretty glaring. It's inconsistent internally, and it's very threatening to our teachers. And so we need to really get a handle on what this bill says, what it really means, and we'll be having that conversation as a board as time moves on. And that, Michael, I think I hit everything in my list. Yes?
All right. Business administrator?
I just have one update for you. In your packet, you should see the results of the second bond sale. And the interest rate was 2.01%. Once again, a great rate for a second bond. I do need to tell you one little hiccup we had. Actually, it was on the part of the bond bank. They sold the bonds as traditional bonds that we would pay back immediately, starting with the second year of the principal and interest. But remember, one of our goals towards this project was to have a two-year delayed principal. And they will honor that. They did call me and ask me if we could reconsider, but Dr. Morris and I sat down and figured that out. And based on our plan for the capital improvements plan, it would severely impact our ability to continue with what we had planned. So just wanted you to know that and ask if you have any objection to that, or I think that's the plan we had in place, and we should move forward with that. So, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. We do not have a student representative report tonight. I don't think we have a finance committee report tonight.
No, but the only thing I would ask is like, maybe in August, we'll hear about how the air conditioning stuff is going, because that was a big project.
Do you want to set up a meeting for August?
Sure.
Set one up. You and I talk tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. We did not get anything on the unanimous consent agenda tonight, but there's a couple of things under discussion and action items. The first one is a motion to affirm the hiring of middle school world language Chinese teacher, middle school school nurse, high school .6 full-time equivalent English and theater teacher, and a high school special education teacher, which is covering a leave of absence. You have a motion for those?
I will make that motion.
Motion from Denise, second from Brian. Any discussion? Brian?
I know the .6 one, is there .4 that he's picking up on the other end, or is it strictly a .6?
It's strictly a .6. Brian, it's replacing a .6 position, and it's strictly related to theater and acting classes, so it's a part-time position.
So there's no benefits involved with .6?
The way our language works, it's prorated.
Okay.
Questions, other questions or comments? All in favor? Five in favor. Those are approved. And a motion to approve two Oyster River High School placement requests, one from Dover and one from New Market for the 2021-22 school year.
So both of these students are seniors whose families have asked that they be allowed to continue their senior year at the high school. And in both cases, we're recommending those decisions. The respective boards have already taken action, and they're just waiting for us where we are at. This is tradition for us. It's tradition for our area school systems. Sometimes family circumstances change, and we don't want seniors to lose the opportunity to graduate with their peer group. And so this is really done on a reciprocal basis. We do it, Portsmouth does it, Dover does it. And it's really, I think, in the best interest of high school students. So we're asking your permission to allow those two seniors to continue at Oyster River.
Denise?
I will make that motion for the two students to, from Dover, New Market, to continue at Oyster River.
We have a motion from Denise, second from Brian. Other discussion and questions? All in favor? Five in favor? That's approved. Other committee updates?
Actually, Denise had mentioned earlier about another tour. Are you interested if we do a tour in a few weeks with all the changes that have been going on? So if I schedule, it'll be Friday at two, a Friday at two. I don't know what, I've checked my schedule, but is that...
Yeah, sounds good.
I know there's probably vacations and everything going on, but I'll throw some dates out there and email you guys and let me know.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. All right, public comment? No public comment? We have future meetings, August 4th, August 18th, and then September 1st, we will move to the library. So that brings us to a non-public session. So I think we will be able to keep this relatively short, but I'll move to enter non-public session pursuant to RSA Chapter 91A, Section 3, Subsection 2, Paragraph E, consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation. Second from Brian. This requires a rule call vote.
Yes, Al Howland, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Adam Newkirk, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Echo Williams, yes. So we'll enter non-public.